Like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have roll call, please, then?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigara.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
President.
Commissioner Schuster.
President.
Commissioner Giacomo.
President.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here.
Y'all, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. Good to see everyone. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 25th, 6:00 PM, right here in the chambers. And at this time, we have a proclamation. Two weeks of firework safety, June 20th through July 6th, 2024. This time, proclamation, two weeks of firework safety, June 20th through July 6th, 2024. Whereas the National Integrated Drought Information System indicates that 67.05% of Colfax County is currently in moderate drought conditions. And whereas in April 2024, the North American Seasonal Fire Assessment noted that northeastern New Mexico is above normal for fire assessment and precipitation is forecast to be below normal for portions of the southwest and west Texas, and further states, fire potential will increase to above normal in the lower elevations of the southwest in May and June. And whereas, public lands and private facilities in northeastern Mexico often enact seasonal fire restrictions and often prohibit fireworks due to their ability to start a wildfire. And whereas, some populations, such as veterans, are sensitive to the noise of fireworks. And whereas, the Raton Humane Society has urged the Raton City Commission to consider the noise impact and traumatization of many domestic animals and pets, and expressed dismay that the private use of fireworks, many of which are illegal, has often continued far beyond the allowable fireworks season. And whereas, the City of Raton Ordinance 130.161 states that the ignition of chasers and firecrackers are prohibited except for the period between June 20th and July 6th of each year, only between the hours of 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM during the allowable period. Exceptions may be granted only by written permit from the city manager. And whereas, the City of Raton Ordinance 130 dash, or .161, prohibited fireworks section states that the following fireworks are prohibited at all times within the City of Raton, such as aerial spinners, helicopters, mines, missile-type rockets, roman candles, shells, and stick-type rockets. And whereas, the City of Raton Ordinance 130.160 lists permissible fireworks as cone fountains, crackling devices, cylindrical fountains, fitter sparklers, ground spinners, illuminating torches, and toy smoke devices and wheels. Whereas, the City of Raton Ordinance 130.158 says that no person shall ignite any fireworks with a motor vehicle or throw fireworks from a motor vehicle. No shall any person place or throw any ignited article of fireworks into or at a motor vehicle or at or near any person or group of people. And no person shall discharge any fireworks within 100 feet of combustible vegetation. Now there be resolved that I, James Nelson Sigara Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim June 20th through July 6th, 2024, as two weeks of firework safety, and urge our citizens to only purchase legal fireworks, be cautious with their use of fireworks for fire safety and prevention, and to be courteous to the neighbors and fellow citizens by following city ordinance presented this day. Chief? Alrighty. This time, we'll take introduction of new employees. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor Commission, first, I would like to, we have several tonight. First, I'd like to call up April Lopez. Introduce.
So, Raton Police Department with Raton Central Dispatch has obtained a new hire, Ms. Heather Segura. She is in addition to our team. She started a couple of weeks ago. Took us a while to get her in, and I'm hoping she'll be certified within 2025.
Next, I'd like to call up Public Works Director Jason Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Commission, I'd like to introduce my two newest employees this evening. On the far left, we have Mr. Garrett Kelly. Garrett, sorry, Garrett, wrong name already. Clayton Kelly. And this one has a twin brother, so I might get it wrong, too. Clayton is a 17-year-old, soon-to-be high school senior that's joining us for the summer and going to work with us throughout next year in the co-op program. Next to him is Isaac Garcia. Isaac is joining his brother Isaiah Garcia in the Public Works Department. They both are graduates of the class of 2024. What's unique about Isaac is Isaac is, at 18 years old, has already completed his CDL training and is testing to be a full-blown CDL driver at 18 years old, which is something to be commended. So Isaac is full-time and getting ready to add to the ranks as well. So we'd like to thank them both for joining us, and he would welcome on board.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. And I'd like to call up Fire Chief Anthony Burke.
Hello, hello.
Chief.
This is our newest employee, and I'll allow him to introduce himself. He is Tucker Harrison. I started about a week ago, and I'll be taking my NREM T test tomorrow.
Nice. That's it. Alrighty. Okay, moving on to item five. Can't possibly have anybody here for this, but items from citizens present. Alright. One at a time, Mayor.
I'll use my microphone. Okay, I'll step up and do that. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I want to thank you all for allowing us to speak tonight. We here are here to represent a group that was put together by Raton Natural Gas and Ms. Patty Link on November 11th. We met at K-Bobs under some concerns with local business members about crime that was occurring here in Raton. On November 2nd, we started a core group of individuals that were to report back to the Business Task Force, and I want to name off those core members. They were Jenny Wainwright, Alicia Gubelnick, who is here today, Alicia, Kathleen Hansen, myself, Mauricio Lemus, Robert Gonzalez, Keith Servo, and Terry Hedley. These eight people have worked very hard, meeting every month, to begin with, once a month, and then we went to once a week for the last five meetings. And we decided that our biggest concern was cleaning up Raton. We felt that, and based off of Ms. Hansen's business and Mr. Servo's business, where is he? Is he here?
Oh, he isn't here.
He couldn't make it, okay. Based off of looking at Mr. Servo's business and Ms. Hansen's business, you know, you take a look at those businesses and you see a sharp, well-taken-care-of property. It's clean. There's not a leaf, a blade of grass out of place. It's well-organized, security cameras, well-lighting, good lighting. And we thought that that might be something that Raton could maybe emulate. And so, we decided that we would start our own, or start a mission to clean up Raton. And so, with work with, working with the city manager, Rick Mestas, Jason Phillips, and Kevin Nolan, we successfully pulled off the first trash pickup. And we call it Talking Trash. And here we are. I want to first thank city manager, Rick Mestas, who came to almost every single one of our meetings. I had not met Mr. Mestas yet, and I was very impressed with his wanting to be involved and his being at our meetings to lend a hand, to answer our questions, our concerns, and he was, he's been a fine example for us to follow. So, thank you, Mr. Mestas.
Yes. And I'd like to add something in there. Our first meeting that we had, October 11th, at K-Bob, Rick, how long were you on the clock at that first meeting? And I said, hey, we're having a luncheon. Would you care to join us? He came in, and it was like Frankenstein met the torches and pitchforks. But yet, Rick was still there with us every meeting, helping to guide and giving us assistance and suggestions.
Couple lunch plates, say. There's pasoli, they said.
And it snowballed from there.
So then Rick had the wise advice to include Jason Phillips and Kevin Nolan, and Jason really stepped up with, to the plate. And as you all know, he contacted, or at least someone on the city contacted the county. The county pitched in three roll-offs that they provided us for free. Every one of those roll-offs was filled up to the brim and dumped. He also was somehow able to convince his city workers, several CDL drivers and some other workers, to volunteer their time on Saturday. And boy, did we work them out, and they worked us out. They met us with open arms and smiling faces at the transfer station, and whether happy about it or not, they dealt with a hell of a lot of trash. And so, we want to thank you for putting this all together. And then, Mr. Nolan, we want to thank you also.
Appreciate it.
You betcha.
Yes.
We want to thank Kevin, because Kevin came as a representative of the city to almost all of our meetings there at the end, and he unknowingly raised his hand, was actually voluntold that he was going to be a team leader. And he did a fantastic job. He was given one of the toughest teams and cleaned up both sides of the street, from the visitor's center up to the ditch there at McDonald's and Arby's, and then across the street and back. And so, he did a fantastic job. So Kevin, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
He did.
Yeah, the youngest group. That's right. And he did an awesome job. We have some outstanding citizens that we want to point out, because...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. We had the ditches, we had the water, we had the mud. It was absolutely disgusting. These folks went into those trenches, and someone said, what'd they say to Will? I was like, oh, no, that's really nasty in there. Will was like, oh, it's just some mud.
Yeah, and so Will said, you know what? We're out here, and we're going to do this. Will Breach is, he is one of the busiest guys here in Raton. If you don't know Will, take a look at the trees over in front of the law office of Dave Stafford. He just trimmed those trees, and as he said, once he was done with those trees, they kind of speak to you. You know, you can see his art in those trees and in his work. And Will's the busiest guy, and yet he dedicated his Saturday to come out and help us. He went down in that ditch and hauled up 20 tires on his own and contributed to something that he didn't have to, but he was there. So Will, thank you very much. Jana Florsham showed up about three weeks, eh, maybe four, in advance of the trash pickup. And all I had to say was, to Jana was, hey, are you interested? And she already knew about it, and already had flyers, 60 apparently.
She was swatting those flyers all over town.
Yeah.
All over town.
We got the word out with Jana doing that, and you couldn't go to a business here in town without a flyer that Jana hung up. And little did Jana know, she showed up just to pick up trash on that day, and I named her a team leader. And she was given one of the toughest teams to actually go across I-25 and pick up all those tires and trash that Will Breach helped her with. So Jana, you did an awesome job. Thank you.
Incredible.
And so, we've got one last one that we want to point out, and that's Julie Main. Julie Main just showed up at one of the meetings, about halfway through our meetings. And I asked her, I said, Julie, what's your concern here? And she said, I just want to volunteer. I want to help. And so Julie actually came up in that meeting, at the first five minutes of being there, with the term Talking Trash. And we actually glommed onto that and used that down at KRTN, and we actually highlighted citizens in town that go around picking up trash on their own. And so, we termed that session, we're going to talk trash about Rick Mestas or talk trash about whoever. And it worked out really well. So Julie Main was our third outstanding citizen that we wanted to recognize.
And the person, the brainstorm idea came from Jenny Wainwright. She's not here tonight. She had her own baby, and now she's doing deliveries for the pharmacy with him in the backseat, and he's not happy right now. This is our organizer right here, Alicia. Here's a new pen pad and... Knock yourself out. Terry was our phone organizer. Here's a new bling-bling for your phone. Warren took his wife on drives for dates in the evening. There's a gas card from Steve.
Oh.
He went around searching and looking for places.
It was very romantic.
Yes.
So what did we do, actually? So that's what we're here mainly to tell you about. So with the help of the city manager, with Jason Phillips, with Kevin Nolan, and all these individuals that we wanted to point out, we actually had 80 signatures. People who came to the trash pickup, we had them sign a waiver for us and a waiver for DOT. So we counted 80 signatures, but when you throw in all the city workers, you throw in the other individuals that actually formed groups that weren't part of our group. We had several groups call us and say, hey, you're going to do what you're doing, but we're going to take care of the park. We're going to take care of all of State Street. We had Ed Herbolt show up with a bunch of sausage and cheese for the workers.
Yes.
But he said, hey, I've got the area down...
Across from City Market. And he, and down through there.
He had about six guys that were cleaning up down there under the underpass with shovels, cleaning the weeds off the sidewalk. I mean, it was just awesome. So when you include all those people, we had, we had well over 100 people that showed up. And then, we continued to see trucks loaded this, the following Saturday at the transfer station, and it seemed like there was just some follow-through the following weekend with more people that wanted to take stuff out to the transfer station. So what were the numbers? We, we got this all from the city. It was 48,000 pounds of trash that were turned into the transfer station. Now, if Jason is listening, he's somewhere here, I know. Okay. We think that includes the furniture, but we're not positive. So that's 24 tons that was turned in. There were about nine trailer loads of furniture, to include couches, recliners, things like that, that were turned into the transfer stations. There were 49 mattresses, or half a semi-load of mattresses, that were collected all across the city. Over 220 cubic yards of limbs and 98 tires. So there was, there was quite a large amount of trash that was collected. We had a lot of citizens call in to Terry Hedley and to Julie Main. Where'd she go? Who reported to them what they'd like us to come to their house or their property to pick up, and we want to thank those citizens for calling in. We thought that kind of would help us concentrate, other than just driving up and down alleys. But we did do a lot of driving up and down alleys. We want to thank the Police Department, the State Police, and the Sheriff's Office. All of them were present between Plum Street and the Welcome Center, along with the Fire Chief Anthony Burke, who provided trash pickers and sharped containers, and then also Colfax County, who dropped off three roll-offs. So what are we expecting out of this? Well, the first thing that we're expecting out of this is we want to ask the citizens of Raton to properly use our trash services. And what am I talking about? You know, we don't want limbs, we don't want mattresses, we don't want furniture put next to dumpsters. We don't want them stuffed into dumpsters. We want people to actually use the transfer station. And so, going off that, we would ask the city also, if you could get more involved with this, with maybe better signage, explaining, or PSAs, explaining where the transfer station is. I was amazed at how many people called us and said, well, I would take it out there myself, but I just don't know where the transfer station is. And, you know, I know a lot of people say, well, I don't listen to the radio, and of course, we don't have the paper anymore, but there's lots of excuses. But if we had better signage or PSAs on the radio that explained this stuff, it might help keep Raton a little, a little more cleaned up. We would ask also that concerning littering and fines, or concerning littering and citations, that we would up the fines and/or possible jail time. If people don't take this seriously, this is going to continue to be a problem. And so, we need to take a look at that and see what our city ordinances say about that and what we can do to possibly beef that up. We need to improve the dumpsters, and I know that we've talked about that, that apparently there's, I think, and, you know, correct me if I'm incorrect about this, but I believe that there's $65,000 a month that's being spent to improve the dumpsters. Is that correct, Mr. Mestas? And I, and I want...
Jason has that...
Okay. And I want to say that that's, that's not just improving the dumpsters as far as the bears are concerned, but it's also to improve the dumpsters for easier use for citizens. And that's a huge improvement, and so I want to ask the city to, to help us keep that going. And then, we want to ask the city for continued support of our group in the future for trash pickups and/or amnesty to citizens on trash pickup days. Now, the last thing that we want to do is we want to talk about our groups that donated to us and the pickers and the water.
Yes, yes. Real quick, we had, everything in those baskets are from Raton as well, all over. Tractor Supply, trash bags and gloves. Records Ace Hardware, trash bags. Super Save, cases of water. Arby's, trash bags. Doggy Styles by Kathleen, pickers. City of Raton, trash bags. The Sweet Shop, a $20 gift card. K-Bob's, a $25 gift card. Bruno's, $30 gift card. All Seasons was a $50 gift card. Denny's, $25 gift card. Alta Convenience Store, $25. Los Chonges, $30 gift card. Riley's, a $30 gift card. Kuniko Tires, oil change tire rotation. And then, Sweet Kismet's Pet Resort, a two-night stay. And then Sonic, in those envelopes. Sonic has given out several $10 gift cards. 111 Park has given out gift cards, and Gate City has given out gift cards. And then, two gas cards for $25 each have been given from the crossroads.
We want to point out Bill Allen and thank him for his help, because he donated his day, his truck, and his trailer. We want to point out Moss Adventures, who donated truck, two trucks, two trailers, and along with other organizations, and Senator, you're going to have to help me out with this, the organizations were...
Rotary and, was it Hassan?
Rotary and Rommel Family Farms.
Yes.
Yeah. And the rest of us were physically there.
And they got together and donated all the shirts, and then these are wonderful shirts. So anyway, that's our presentation. We want to thank the city for this, for allowing us to do this. You could have said no, but you didn't. You worked with us, and we want to continue doing this, looking possibly at quarterly. So we'll, we're going to meet again and talk about that and see what, where we go from here with this effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, on behalf of the city and the commission and everybody.
Alright, next up.
Hello. I'm Beverly Baca from the VFW Auxiliary, and this is Amanda.
Segura.
Segura. And we just came to invite you guys to our second year of our flag retirement ceremony. It is at Friday night at 6 o'clock by the Aquatic Center. And last year was the first year I ever went to one, and I was in tears. It was such a beautiful ceremony. I had never realized how touching it was going to be, you know? And between the VFW, the VFW Auxiliary, and the ALX Club is where we're going to do it, and the ALX also are going to supply 200 hot dogs. So we just want to invite everybody to come. It's including all you guys here. If you could come, and we got in hundreds of flags. We always get a lot of flags. People don't know what to do with them. There was somebody said, well, I was just going to throw in the dumpster. You know, there's a lot of people that need to get educated on our American flag, you know, and it is a very beautiful ceremony. So we just want to come down and invite you guys to go.
We do the education at the ceremony, and we burn, we retired over 500 flags last year. This year, I'm not sure how many we've shredded to cut, to retire, but it's been a lot. And especially our service people who are out there, it would be nice if they can come and support, especially our veterans, because we have the veterans actually burned the first flag, so.
If you have some folks that still have some flags that they'd like to have retired, who do we contact?
You can drop them off at the VFW or call me.
Okay.
And I'll, I think Desiree has my phone number, and I could come by and pick them up. It's 575-707-3350. You can call me if you need a DJ also.
There's, there's a box for collecting flags at the Aquatic Center and at the Fire Department, I believe.
I left, no, I left the one at Ace Hardware. They're going to keep it year-round. So this way, there's a place all the time that can drop off boxes, and, and all the time, you can drop off at the VFW, any time of the year, you can drop off over there. The Ace Hardware asked, I think, to just keep the box and have it there for us, because we picked up maybe five or six boxes that they have collected through the year. So it's...
We'd like to see you all there.
Like to see you there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. I just wanted to briefly touch base with you during the museum's presentation for Rogers Tax back in March or April. We mentioned the Field of Dreams exhibit that we were doing for the, in conjunction with the Little League Tournament that's going on. Actually, the Field of Dreams exhibit is up through August 3rd. It starts on June 18th. Before I do that, I want to encourage you to please stop by the museum. The En Bank Art Show and Sale is up, and that's Raton Humanities Council fundraiser, and it's, it's a beautiful show, so. And the gallery is shining and is a wonderful place for that art to be displayed, so we're happy to be able to do that. That opened today and will be there through Saturday, the 15th, at 4:00 PM, so. Speaking of flags, just let you know, the museum has taken over the flag fund, and we have two 20-by-30 flags onsite, ready to go. So it's my understanding, RPS will get a new flag up over the, for the 4th, so we'll have that, and back to the Field of Dreams. I handed out a little packet for you. We put together 500 of those. Little League is anticipating 500 participants in their tournament, and so... And so it's fun working with this. Tom Ross is the author and artist of The Black Sox, A Century Later, which is a story about the 1919 World Series scandal. And so that was the White Sox originally. And still are the White Sox. But there were players that were involved in a scandal. And the Field of Dreams movie is based on actual, actually, that scandal and the players that were involved in that. So I gave you a little taste of what the Little League Tournament players will be receiving. We have daily door prizes during the tournament. There's a replica World Series ticket, entry ticket in there. And it has a tear-off where, as the tournament players come in, they can sign their name. And we'll do a daily drawing. And we've got different prizes, baseball cards and different memorabilia that we'll be giving away on a daily basis during that tournament. We're also tying in some local connections. We have Cole Camp baseball pitchers that go back to 1901, 1902, 1903. We also, I want to thank Randy Jeffries. I reached out to him. He was one of the 1957 Little League champions, the state champions, that went to Little League Regionals in California back in 1957.
It was 67.
67, you're right. Yeah, he's not that old. He's not as old as I am, that's for sure. I'm telling on myself. But anyhow, he provided us with uniforms and scrapbooks and photographs. So we're excited to tie that in. Also, we have photographs of Legion Field when it was being built as a baseball field in 1934, '35. And then when the wall was completed, the adobe wall that went all the way around in 1936. So that's fun. And then we've reached out to the 8990 and the 2007 Raton Tigers that were state champs. So we're going to tie in some local history to that as well. Just want to real quickly thank individuals that helped contribute to this. All the, you received a pack of baseball cards. All of the kids received a pack of baseball cards. And that was a donation from Panini America, who actually designed and produced baseball cards and football cards and basketball cards. And so we reached out to them and they were just hit it out of the park. They sent all the cards that we needed to be able to get to the kids. And then also Takosa, Luanne down there did a great job of printing posters for us. So I'll leave these if we can hang it at City Hall. Please, there's front and back, basically, one for the tournament and one otherwise. And then also Brad McQuary designed the artwork for the posters and the tickets and the cards that are in there. And then also, let's see, Tom Ross, who is the author, you know, he allowed us to use part of his artwork for the posters and the work that we've done. And he's, we're planning on having him come and do a program. He's a truly interested, inspirational gentleman that just loves this subject as well as many others. But a great artist. The actual exhibit is life-size, Field of Dreams. The players are walking out of the cornfields. And it's actually made it to town. That team is here. So we're just waiting the Little League teams now. So at any rate, just want to invite you to please stop by. You know, it'll be up through August 3rd again. And we will be having raffle tickets, which will help raise money for the museum. Just real quickly, I'll name those raffle items. We have a framed Joe Jackson card, which also has a chip of his bat in the card. That's a $250 value. We have four Rockies tickets. And they'll be playing the Braves on August 11. That's a $155 value. A hobby box of 2019 Diamond Kings. That's a collector's box of baseball cards. We have a framed Joe Jackson five-card set and an autographed Black Sox book. That is the book of Tom Ross's. So please stop by, take a look at baseball history and join the museum. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Mestes. My name is Pat Walsh and I'm a resident of Raton. And first of all, I want to thank you so much for the proclamation on the two weeks of fireworks safety for Raton. It's very encouraging to be here tonight and see all the folks who love this town and are working on ways to make it even better. And so I think, I speak for most people in town, that the city fireworks on the Fourth of July are incredible. And I think this proclamation does a really good job of reminding people of what's legal and okay as far as private fireworks and what's not so legal and not okay with private fireworks. So I'm very thankful for that proclamation. I wanted to paraphrase or re-quote Warren Walton over there when he was talking about the trash issue. And he said something like, "If people don't take it seriously, the problem's going to continue." And so in that vein, I would encourage you to encourage the police officials to try to enforce the laws that the city already has in place. I'm not asking for any additional laws. But I do think we have those laws in place for a reason. I know it may not be the easiest thing to enforce. However, I think the city needs to show that it's serious about the ordinance that it has in place. So as I wrap up here, I'd just like to get a quick show of hands for how many people would agree with that position, if you agree with that position. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, CNN One, we'll move into the business section of our meeting. Thank you all. Don't rush off, guys. It's just getting fun. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of May 28, 2024 regular meeting minutes. They stand presented. If there are no corrections or additions in them, they will stand as... No additions or corrections? Meeting stand, minutes stand approved. Thank you. Item B, Public Hearing Infrastructure Improvement Plan, ICIP, in other words, fiscal year '26, fiscal year '30. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor, Commission, enclosed in your packets is the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan for the City of Raton, covering FY '26 through '30. The Local Government Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan is a planning tool which establishes priorities for anticipated infrastructure projects for counties, municipalities, tribal governments, special districts and senior citizen facilities. The Local Government ICIP is administered through the Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division. The ICIP planning tool encourages entities to develop and update their five-year plan annually, which is submitted to the state. It provides an opportunity for communities to assist and assess any critical needs. There are a total of 39 items totaling nearly $87 million. Ladies and gentlemen, buyer powerball tickets. The top five items on our list are, number one, the Lake Malloy Dam Safety Improvement for $30 million. Storm Drainage System Improvements for $1.7 million. Raton Depot Renovation for $2 million. Raton Animal Shelter Replacement for $1 million. And one Megalot Photovoltaic Storage for $4.2 million. There are 34 other items on this list, ranging from senior center renovations, bridge repairs, police equipment, ADA pedestrian improvements and repairs to the Aquatic Center and airport.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a tool that we use to go after capital outlay. As Mr. Mestes said, you know, we've got on here almost $87 million worth of projects, not yet funded, $85.1 million. So it shows you how slow capital outlay can be at times and why we have to look at other funding sources. Although we did get a bit of good news today. It looks like water storage tanks, water truss boards coming through with $1.25, $250,000 would probably be a loan for the city, but the $1 million would be the grant. So we'll be able to work on water storage tanks there. But this is what we use to justify going after capital outlay and improvements in other cities. This is a public hearing. If anyone, this is public information. It's on the website. If anyone has any questions, comments, we'll do more and have to answer right now. All right. Yep.
I wasn't planning on speaking twice. My name is Pat Walsh, resident of Raton. I'm also a volunteer with the Raton Humane Society. And when I heard $1 million for a new shelter, my heart just went pitty pat. So I would invite all of you to go out. And the shelter is amazing because Barbara Bonahum is amazing. We even have a shelter because of her. It's time, though. It's time for some help out there. I go out and volunteer in the building where we keep cats about once a week. The, you know, there are just things that need to happen out there. So I would invite you, if any of you haven't been out to the shelter, go do a little tour, check it out, see what you think. It would be great for the animals and for the people who work there.
It was part of our capital request last year. Just did not get funded, didn't get chosen. We had high hopes for it, yeah. We had high hopes. We'd heard that it was something that they might fund last year. And when it came out, it wasn't there. So hopefully this year. Any other comments? All righty. Item C, Discussion, Deliberate and Act on Pickleball Court Specifications. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor, Commission, enclosed in your packets is the engineering evaluation for the pickleball courts. We're at a point now where we need to provide the engineers some instruction on how to proceed with the design. There are three options presented to the engineers: post-tension concrete, asphalt concrete, reinforced concrete. There are a number of cost-benefits decisions to be weighed out. Ultimately, it looks like their recommendation would be to go with the typical pickleball installation using a post-tension concrete. The engineering firm recommends that, though the City of Raton currently has funding for construction of pickleball courts, it has no additional funding set aside for maintenance. Based on limited maintenance budget and freeze-thaw and expansive clay conditions in Raton, the engineering firm recommends constructing a post-tension concrete court within the current construction budget. This may limit the construction to a two, to a four-court or even to your, two-court configuration. However, additional courts can be built once future funding is secured.
So at this time, we do have a recommendation to go with the post-tension recommendation. And then at that time, we will go out for bid on the number of courts that we can get. We're going to layer it, eight, six, four and two, or is it eight, four and two, Jase? I can't remember. Jaden?
I believe we're going eight, four and two.
Eight, four, two, yeah. But we are going to recommend they go with the post-tension construction. That's what the engineers say. Karen, did you want to speak anything?
Well, Rick did such a great job of summarizing my memo. But I did want to ask if anyone has any questions for me, any questions about the memo?
I'll start, I guess. In your report, there's no site plan. So where exactly are the choices that you made as to where these courts would possibly be located?
So at this time, we don't have the plans completed. But when we had, we had circulated a number of different courts that were literally around the Aquatic Center. And what we had done is we had laid out all the utilities. There's actually a lot of utilities in the area. And really tried to pick locations that stayed clear of that. And with that, the feedback that we had gotten back was north and east of the Aquatic Center, but still south of the road.
And then your geotech, it's not completed yet?
Correct.
Do you have an idea of the round time as to when that will be done?
So we're currently doing the laboratory testing. And so it'll probably be done, I would say, within a month.
That's all I have.
Yeah, you asked the same question I was going to ask. Where are they going to be? Yeah, that was my biggest concern. Where they are in the kind of area that we talked about previously.
And we did reach out to the contractors that provided quotes a couple of years ago to the pickleball group and asked if we can get updated numbers due to the crazy inflation on the construction side of things. And we were actually surprised. One of them came back and said that it's not actually much different from his original cost. So he was thinking that it would probably be around $450,000 for construction of eight courts. And then construction of four courts would be about $250. So I think, you know, if those quotes do come in like that, I think we could probably do four courts.
I just had a comment. Apparently, he's not called you. Buddy's voices have not stayed the same two years.
I thought the memo was very thorough and well researched and gave us a big basis to make that opinion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
You said the soil sampling's already been, or in the process of...
The soil has been sampled and we've submitted it to the laboratory. And we're waiting for the laboratory test at this point. But I don't anticipate we're going to see anything different than what we typically see in Raton, which is expansive or collapsible clays. So.
All righty.
Anything else?
Any other questions, comments?
Does anything remain down on a master plan or a comprehensive plan for how this is going to fit into another infrastructure in Roundhouse Park? If that's where it goes. Are there future plans of anything else?
I don't think this has been added to the master plan. We did a master plan, how long ago was it? Three years ago, four years ago?
The comprehensive?
Comprehensive plan, yeah.
Eighty-five. Not that long ago, no. But we did receive... Recently, a grant from the National Park Service to do a lot of park and trail planning. And so the idea with that is to kind of get behind what goes where and what we're going to do. But in general, Roundhouse Park was, that section of Roundhouse Park, that's south of the road, was considered kind of the outdoor recreation around the pool area.
And does the pickleball courts have anything for concession stands there?
The back of the Aquatic Center is set up for concessioning if that were to be a need. That party room has availability for the back.
Even during weekends when pickleball tournaments may be on for people to get refreshments and snacks and everything like that, that could supplement some of the income for the City of Raton.
I'm sure arrangements could be made.
It could be made. It hasn't been done that I know of recently, but it's not that it couldn't happen, yeah.
Good afternoon, evening. I'm Leslie Fernandez. I'm representing the Raton Pickleball Club. I'd like first to, kind of like Pat Walsh did, I'd like everybody who's here from our pickleball group or who supports pickleball courts here in Raton to just stand up real quickly. So we've worked hard for that support. So we've worked hard for that support, and we included tonight several members from the Trinidad Pickleball Club and our international representative from the Philippines who plays with us whenever he's not working and who comes every single meeting to show his support for this. I, I'd like to, and if anybody else wants to speak, they are certainly welcome to, but they knew that I would. I would like to encourage you to accept this proposal, and I'd like to thank Ms. Sterns for this. She has included us in a lot of her considerations. When you talk about where they were going, she reached out to a lot of different people, but included the pickleball club. And I think we probably knew pretty well where, where they should and shouldn't go, and she took that into consideration, and we really appreciate it. We also appreciate her saying that she's reached out to some of the bid providers from two years ago that JP Duran had gotten, because I urge you, until you get those bids, not to limit the number of courts. Because I tell you, if you were to put two courts, it's really, it's really not, not even, I don't wanna say not worth it, because if we come down to that, that's what happens. But I would ask Jason and you all to think eight, six, and four as the three alternatives, not eight or six, four, and two, because two really is, is something that, you know, we had, we had two courts plus just this morning. That happens every day regularly. So I urge you to accept this and do the post-tension concrete. You've heard from Mike Cool, a member of our group previously, who's done contracting all his life, who informed you that, that that's the way to go. You've also heard JP say that most of the, not most, all the pickleball contractors won't do it if you don't do post-tension construction. So please, and we urge you to do that tonight, act tonight, and hopefully with the engineering and the geotech stuff, we'll keep moving along. So I thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions, before we get back? Remember, this is, this is for the recommendation of the type of construction. This isn't accepting a bid or anything.
Can you make a motion to accept the post-tension construction in the bid, for the bidding process?
Do we have a motion and a second to accept what was recommended, the post-tension construction of the project? Is there any further discussion at this time? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, next step, I guess, Mr. Mestes will be going out for bid. Yes, sir? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item D, Deliverate an Act on Event Form for Raton Little League District All-Stars June fourteenth through the seventeenth and June twenty-first through twenty-fifth. And have a great evening. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the city requests your approval for the Raton Little League District All-Stars, June fourteenth through the seventeenth and June twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. The district tournament games are part of an international tournament hosted by Little League Baseball Incorporated. Tournament begins on June fourteenth at the district level and will conclude with the state tournament and World Series in the seven other divisions of play. Raton Little League will host the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four district tournament and will host games between twenty-eight and thirty-eight, baseball, twenty-eight and thirty, excuse me, baseball teams and twelve to fifteen softball teams. An estimated five hundred players will travel to Raton, bringing in an additional fifteen hundred people with them. The certificate of insurance is enclosed in your packet.
All righty, huh? This is gonna be a great event, good time, a lot of kids running around. It'll be fun. What is your case of motion?
I'm going to approve the event form for the Raton Little League District All-Stars, June fourteenth through seventeenth and June twenty-first through the twenty-fifth.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the event form for the Raton Little League District All-Stars. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the, well, we got someone who wants to.
No, I was just gonna, I'll let you vote, and then I just have one thing to say, so go ahead.
Okay, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm Hillary Pasquali with Raton Little League Board. And actually, I just came down to invite all of you to come down, check out. We have fourteen teams coming from six different states, so they're all gonna be arriving hopefully Thursday evening, early Friday morning. Games kick off at five-thirty Friday nights. We have some food trucks lined up that will be down there. Saturday and Sunday are gonna be really busy. We have games at eight, ten, twelve, two, four, and six on all fields Saturday and Sunday. So come on down and check it out. And if anybody's interested in volunteering, we are still looking for volunteers. We do have a meeting Thursday night at the fields at six P.M. If you're interested in helping out, doing any of the books, or we have a couple other spots in the concession stand, we'd love to have you guys down there.
All righty, thank you. All right, item E, Deliverate an Act on Ratification of Union Contract Between the City of Raton and Raton Firefighters Local Two Three Seven Eight. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, as discussed at our last meeting, here's the contract with the recommended changes that have been approved by the city and the union.
I believe last time this came to us, we delayed it because we wanted some wording changed about the holidays, and I saw that was making care of.
I will make a motion to adopt the ratification of the union contract between the City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Local Two Three Seven Eight.
Motion and a second to adopt the ratification of the union contract between the City of Raton and Raton Firefighters Local Two Three Seven Eight. Des, could we have a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Dracamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item F, Deliverate an Act on Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash thirty-five, authorizing change order for Type One ambulance utilizing the Houston Galveston Area Council H-gac contract. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, we originally authorized the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars in change order number one on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And the EMS chief traveled to Ohio and inspected the ambulance, and prior to final delivery is requesting authorization for graphics at an additional cost of six thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, bringing the total to fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight, and these changes will be paid via the general fund.
All righty. And the decon system was because the one previously was obsolete.
Obsolete, yes, sir.
So the fifteen thousand is the total for all the changes? Okay.
And it's now, instead of a twenty-one Dodge Ram, it's a twenty-four Ford. Okay.
I'll move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash thirty-five, authorizing change order for Type One ambulance utilizing Houston Galveston Area Council contract.
Second?
Motion and second to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-three thirty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Deliverate an Act on Arthur Johnson Library, Library Board Recommendation. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, due to a vacancy on the library board, we submit for your consideration Ms. Lenore Barfield. Ms. Barfield is a huge supporter of the library and brings a wealth of experience, including service as a former college president and career educator.
I'll make a motion to nominate Lenore Barfield to the Arthur Johnson Library Board.
Motion and second to nominate Ms. Barfield for the library board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? How many board members? Item H, Deliverate an Act on Moles &amp; Corbin Task Order Number Two Zero Two Two dash Four, New Electrical Vault Bidding and Construction Phase Services. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is the engineering portion of the airport vault. This is also part of the larger budget and out, budget that includes construction, administration, inspection, and so forth. And the total amount for the engineering portion is sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two, which includes several man-hours for architects, engineers, designers, and support, and covers, you know, expenses, everything from mileage, lodging, meals, to copies.
Any questions?
Is this general fund, or are we not to that point of seeking grant money yet?
What we'll do is, we're, we had a meeting with the FAA today, and we are pursuing this through a grant fund, so it is our intention to fund this through the grant from the FAA.
Yes, if I could. Mayor and Commissioner, as Mr. Mestes said, we did have a meeting today with the FAA. The project has gone out to bid, but it came in a lot higher than anticipated, so we've submitted two applications, one to the FAA, which we'll be bringing a grant agreement to you once we receive that. The FAA, we're looking at total project costs of seven hundred and forty-six thousand, nine thirty, of which, if you approve this task order this evening, for the sixty-six thousand, one forty-two, that's part of those costs. So we would be asking the FAA to cover fifty point zero seven two percent, and then the state has agreed to allow us to submit an application for forty-eight point nine eight percent, and then the city would do our normal one percent sponsor share. So it's a really good deal for the city of Raton. We just need to get through the application phase, and then I think our plan would be to bring you the two agreements for approval and then award the project at the same meeting. So as of right now, that would be the plan.
Yeah, I was talking with Mr. Mestes yesterday about, I couldn't remember what our, usually with the grants, if it was five, I thought it was five percent, but one percent is, is much better.
So it's, it's a ninety-ten. So FAA traditionally covers ninety percent, and then the last few years, the state and the city used to split the ten percent, five and five, but now the state's doing nine and we're doing one. So I think it's pretty much been that since COVID.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the Moles &amp; Corbin Task Order Number Twenty Twenty-two Four, New Electrical Vault Bidding and Construction Phase Services.
Motion and second to accept the task order number Twenty Twenty-two dash four for the new electrical vault. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Deliverate an Act on Amendments to Convention Center Usage Rules and Regulations. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the convention center usage has not been updated since February of two thousand and eight. We felt like we needed to make this clear and change a few of the things, and I want to go over these things right now. The only, there are charges for meeting room, dining room, gym, and kitchen. The dining room and gym are remaining the same. The meeting room prices, the rental fee is going from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars per day, and the kitchen is going from fifty to seventy-five dollars per day. There was also previously a damage deposit that was charged per day. Instead of charging, we didn't change any of the fees for the damage deposit. We've just said, there's one damage deposit, you don't have to pay it every day. And then the other changes that we made were, there are certain things that they used to do in two thousand and eight, like rent VCRs and things like that, that we no longer do, that we took out of this year's instruction or this year's regulation. And finally, the other major change was the charge for, excuse me, I'm sorry, the table and setup. There's twenty-five dollars, which remains the same, fifty dollars if city is required to set up, but there will be an additional fee of twenty-five dollars for the public affairs address system. And those are really the bulk of the changes in this. So we did really increase the prices very much just on two items, and we lessened the burden on the damage deposits.
I have one question, if I may. Under dining room, it has, the reservation fee is one twenty-five, but the rental fee is eighty-five. And so the other ones, the rental fee is less and it can go towards, or the reservation fee is less, it can go towards the rental fee?
Those would be refunded. The damage deposits.
So they reserve it for one twenty-five for the dining, not the damage deposits. So under the reservation fee in the first column, like, for example, the meeting room fee is fifty and the rental fee is seventy-five, so it goes towards the seventy-five dollars. But the reservation fee for the dining room is higher than the rental fee. So it doesn't, doesn't make sense.
I think he was just intending to raise the rental fee, actually, because I had caught that on the meeting room. I just think maybe they should be switched, is, was the intention? That's what I'm wondering. So like, the reservation fee is eighty-five, but the rental would be one twenty-five, then it, that would go towards that. Is that what?
No, I think it's one twenty-five reservation and one twenty-five rental.
Oh. It's always been a hundred dollar reservation fee, or deposit, should I say?
I'm not even looking at the deposits.
Oh, see, so that's.
I don't think they're refunded.
I think he added twenty-five to the.
Reservation fee and the rental should be the same, though.
Yeah, because this doesn't make sense.
So like, the meeting room is fifty to re, reserve it, but then it's seventy-five to rent it, which is fine, because then the fifty goes towards the seventy-five, and they only have to pay twenty-five. But the dining room says reservation one twenty-five, but the rental's only eighty-five.
So the, I think it should be one twenty-five and one twenty-five.
I, I'm just wondering what the intention is, because right now, it wouldn't work out, because then you'd have to.
That's a typo.
Yeah.
So, oh, we'll, we'll fix that.
So the rental fee for the dining room is one twenty-five?
And then we'll just leave the reservation fee at a hundred?
Right.
Okay. And then I have a question as well. Regarding the kitchen use, under the community kitchen contracts, I know we don't have too many, but is that the, is that?
No, that's not on here.
That's different.
That's different, yes, no?
I will, oh, did you ask?
No.
With that change to the.
To see what?
So what it was?
Yeah, it was eighty-five, eighty-five.
Eighty-five, eighty-five, that's the one I was.
With that change in those fees for the dining room reservation and rental fee, I would make a motion to approve the amendments to the Convention Center Use Agreement Rules and Regulations.
Motion and second to adopt with the aforementioned changes? Is there any further discussion, questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, I apologize about the topographical error, that was my fault.
Not right. We gotta figure it out. Item J, Deliverate an Act on Resolution Twenty Twenty-four dash thirty-six, adopting changes to the travel policy relating to the reimbursement and travel for per DM and mileage expenses for public officers and employees of the city while on city business. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to call forward our Chief of Staff, Michael Ann Antinucci, to discuss the changes between the state and the city.
Mayor and Commissioner, you'll see the attached memo that we
Mayor and Commission, you'll see the attached memo that we receive annually from the Department of Finance and Administration. By statute, they do have to publish the fiscal year per diem rates, and so the attached memo was issued on April 24th. So, the last few years, we've brought these to you in the form of a resolution to update the city's existing policy. So, you'll see the changes to the per diem rates for FY24. The in-state travel was 157, and that will increase to $166. That is for overnight travel, that's an increase of $9. For the in-state county of Santa Fe, which is considered a special area, that was 210, and that one is actually going up $21, it would be 231. And then for your out-of-state travel, that would be the same as the in-state rate, which will increase the $9 to 166. There were no changes to partial day per diem or meal rates, so those will not change. So, with that, we would recommend your approval of Resolution 2024-36.
Any comments, questions?
I will move to approve.
Second?
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-36. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K is deliberate and act on Resolution 2024-37, fiscal year 24, budget adjustment number 14. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commission, I do bring to you this evening a budget adjustment. You'll see within the general fund, we're just moving monies amongst the various departments, so the net adjustment is zero. And then we have our various special revenue funds, pretty much the same, we're just moving monies amongst the various line items. We do just have about two and a half weeks left in the fiscal year, so I probably will bring another budget adjustment at the next meeting to incorporate some of the actions this evening. I did not include the change order on the ambulance on here. We do hope that the ambulance is received by June 30th, so if for some reason it is not, then we would need to re-budget those expenses in the new fiscal year. So, hopefully I'll know by the next commission meeting if that's something I even need to adjust for FY24. And then, like I said, at a previous meeting, you did adopt the juvenile justice grant. That was a line item adjustment from travel expense to youth committee. CYFD has a special form that we have to approve, and so you did approve that, but I do need to adjust it in the state's LGBTMS system, so that's why you're seeing that on here again. But that's all I have for you this evening. Is there any questions?
It was pretty straightforward to figure it out, so.
This was a pretty easy one.
Any comments, questions for Michael Ann?
I'll make a question to adopt Resolution 2024-37, fiscal year 24, budget adjustment number 14.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-37. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And brings us to item L, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, a lot has happened since our last meeting. The Mayor Protim, the Chief of Staff and the Deputy City Manager, and I met with Representative Tressa Ledger Fernandez on June 22nd. We feel that was a very positive meeting. The Mayor Protim and I also participate, participated in the city cleanup on June 1st, and the Mayor, Mayor Protim, and I also welcomed Roll Champion Terry Cruz back to her hometown last Tuesday night. We had our first all-city meeting on May 29th, where I can honestly say that the barbecue lunch was a way bigger hit than my presentation. That being said, under the big rocks, with the treasurer, our Chief of Staff, Michael Ann Antinucci, will have the con later this week as I travel to Santa Fe for the City Managers Conference on Thursday and Friday. The police are going to have a busy week with the carnival and rodeo and are preparing coverage with their officers and moving cameras around town. The fire department met today with the Joanoff operators and will receive more training in the coming weeks. In the Public Works, they're working on the entire storm drain system, digging ditches, cleaning out sediment, and hauling it off. Engineering, we met today again with the FAA and New Mexico DOT to review improvements at the airport. Facility improvements are still being made by Public Works to the concession stands and bathrooms for the upcoming baseball game, and with the clerk, the clerk has been helping with updating many of our agreements, rules, and regulations. Economic developments, we have facilitated a move for rural Raton to the visitor center and have moved planning and zoning and code enforcement to the Highlands Building. Our hope is to create a synergy at the visitor center for outreach and economic development. Mentioned in dispatches, I would like to mention Larry Marcus and Adrian Mendez and the Public Works crews for their work preparing the ball field complex for the upcoming Little League Tournament that will begin this Friday. The field and facilities look absolutely superb. David Gallegos and the Solid Waste Crew for their hard work and participation in the Community Cleanup Day. And last but not least, I have a picture here, Philmont Crew 610N in New Palestine, Indiana. Lead Advisor Bob Bindwald, along with the crew of eight scouts and three adult advisors, contacted the city to perform a service for our community. They chose to assist us by hand-weeding Heritage Park. They're joined by Adrian Mendez, James Holling, and Carson Trujillo from Public Works. We thank them for their generous offer and to provide a service to the community on their way from Indiana to Philmont. And finally, some closing thoughts. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the country music star Clint Black. Though he lived most of his early life in Texas, Black was actually born in Long Branch, New Jersey, the youngest of four children. He's of Italian descent with his family roots in Palermo, Sicily. Incidentally, Long Branch is the birthplace of two other famous Italian-American singers, the first being Melanie, who is widely known for her hits, "Brand New Key" and "Look What They've Done To My Song, Mom." The other singer-songwriter from Long Branch is Bruce Springsteen, I think some of you may have heard of him. But getting back to Clint, before he hit it big, he supported himself as a construction worker and fishing guide while singing nights and weekends at various lounges in Texas and Nashville. Despite a slow and mostly in-house basis start to his music career, he persisted in facing forward, and today, nobody can deny his success. "No Time To Kill" was his fourth studio album. It was released in 1993, three decades ago now. The lyrics to the album's title have always stayed with me, and lately, they've acquired new shades of meaning as I think about where Raton will be in the future. If you indulge me, I'd like to read a few of them. There's no time to kill between the cradle and the grave. Father Time still takes a toll on every minute that you save. Legal tender is never going to change the number on your days. The highest cost of living is dying, and that's when everybody pays. So, have it spent before you get the bill, there's no time to kill. This is true for Raton. So, if you see me trying to rush things, I'm already nine months into a five-year contract. That leaves me four years and three months to go. I seriously have no time to kill. And finally, I'd like to wish my beloved US Army a happy 249th birthday in 2014.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Any other information we need to know about? Commissioner Honeyfield, Commissioner Giacomo, Commissioner Schuster.
You know, I want to thank our police and fire department for the work they're going to do. This is a busy time for them, and I know, even though a lot of citizens don't think they've worked hard enough in enforcing that fireworks code, I know, we know they do, and we appreciate their work.
Mayor Protim?
Nothing.
I have nothing. This meeting is adjourned.